Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. The council will begin by swearing in, giving the oath of office to Tanner Labley, who is going to be our latest, our newest police officer. So if you'll join me out front of this podium. (inaudible) Raise your right hand if you have to. I state your name.
I am Tanner Labley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. (applause) Hey, council, before we begin our, go to our consent agenda, there are a couple of items that we are going to add to our agenda this evening. During our appearances, we will accept $84,000 from Ira Raffel, who's been involved with the Quiet Zone fundraising. We do also have a public hearing that we would like to add to our resolutions and action items that we'd like to set. Jeff, do you want to discuss that?
Sure. We just need to set a public hearing for our 5:14 council meeting for the water main project, proposed water main project for Second Street between Jackson and Madison.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and add that at that time, just simply setting a date for this appearance, for this public hearing. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda items. We have approval of minutes from the April 9 meeting. We have liquor license approvals. Actually, we don't have anything to list tonight. We just have that listed. We have an amended claims amount. The amended amount will be $1,121,415.15. We also have a resolution for a park and recreation hiring and also a resolution for hiring for the fire department. Are there any questions regarding those consent agenda items? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rivalinsky. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council, we'll move to our appearances of those wishing to address the council. We have a request from the Jefferson County Fair Board. Dennis Tomes, is Dennis here?
Yes.
Come on up, Dennis. Tell us about your request for the parade route.
Like to thank you for seeing me tonight and like to message John, we're going to head with tobacco signs.
Oh, you are. That's great news. Thank you.
The Greater Jefferson County Fair Parade, we always kick off the fair with a parade that we like to start at the high school parking lot and come up Broadway to Main and then Main, North St., Bix and Bricks, and then back down to the high school. So I spoke with the chief today on, it was all right with her and we need to get back together so she can set her vacation times and stuff. Yeah, the day of the fair is, or the parade is June 26th at 6:30. Everybody's welcome. You know, it's not just a agriculture parade. If you've got a bicycle and a horn, come on down.
Great. Well, yeah, in my opinion, we don't have enough parades in town, so we want to make the most of the ones we do have. So we do encourage everyone to participate in the Jefferson County Fair Parade, so thank you. I'd entertain a motion then to approve the parade route for June 26th for the Jefferson County Fair.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie, second by Boyer. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hope we have great weather. Thank you. And next, we have a request from Jessica Garchick and Rebecca Huggins, our librarian. Again, this is going to be regarding a street closing, so who will be addressing us this evening?
Iowa.
Jessica, great. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessica Garchick and I'm the Youth Services Librarian at Fairfield. And I started back in August of last year. And every year, the library has its annual kickoff for the summer reading program. And it's always on the first Saturday in June, so this year, that will be June 2nd. And it's usually in the afternoon from 1 till about 4:30. And we have a series of events out in front of the library, as well as a reading marathon in the children's area and events in the meeting room. And it's been tradition to, for the past few years, to block off the street in front of the library so that we can have like a bounce castle. And we also have the annual, or the biannual book sale. And so we would like to ask permission to block off Adams. I believe it's from Second to First. And I was told that traditionally, the alley is kept open and that way, we can have more room for fun.
Okay, that's great. We are familiar with the event and it is a great way to kick off the summer reading program. So their quest, council, is to do the street closing on Adams, and that would be between Main and Second Street?
Oh, yeah. Main and Second.
Move for approval.
Okay. Moved by Rivalinsky.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will receive a brief presentation and the check from the Quiet Zone, from Ira Raffel. Ira?
I wanted to thank the city council for its support. And I want to thank everyone on behalf of the entire community, but especially in the over 1,000 people that had individual contributions. Some were very large and generous, but even the $25 donations that people stretched to give all added up to make the amount that we have here. So I'd like to thank all of you on behalf of everyone for fulfilling this project.
Thank you, Ira. You can hand it to the chief and the chief will pass it down here. Say thanks very much. And I also want to express our thanks as well. We believe this will be a good community improvement and the resolve that this committee had to see this done is something that we really appreciate. So we do thank you for all of your efforts. We think it was a good partnership as well, working with the city, with our management, and also with Burlington Northern over the years. So thank you very much for that. The council will move on to our area for resolutions and action items. The first is, we have a request for a donation for this year's Fourth of July celebration fireworks that will be conducted by the Van Buren Jefferson County J.C.'s. And they will be continuing the tradition of holding them at Waterworks Park on July 4th. And they are requesting $1,000, which is generally what we do on an annual basis, towards this event. I thought it was okay to bring this directly to the council since in the past, Ways and Means has recommended and approved this. This would also be something that would kind of come out of our reserves for local option sales tax.
So I'd move for approval.
Moved by Rivalinsky to approve the request, second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on the construction of D Street. And at this point in time, we will open the public hearing. And are we going to receive a report from French Reniker on the numbers that we've? Jerry?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
These bids were opened in Ames last Tuesday and we received four bids. Should I go and read those, Mayor?
Please. Yes. Thanks, Jerry.
The low bid is Shipley Construction Company, Burlington, Iowa. The total for the two projects is $386,473.70. Second bidder was Alliance Construction Group and Kay Cunningham Construction, and that is a firm I'm not familiar with, $441,667.35. J&amp;L Construction from Washington, Iowa. Third bidder is $456,455.50. And the last bid was Cunningham Construction alone, without the Alliance Group. And their bid was $527,334.31. We haven't, the DOT hasn't awarded it yet. I think they'll do that tomorrow. So if you would like to proceed, the language I'd like is award subject to the Iowa DOT approval.
Thanks, Jerry. Well, if there aren't any other public comments, we'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a recommendation to award the contract subject to the approval of DOT.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hammers.
I do have a question, Jerry. What was the engineer's estimate for that job? You don't?
Jeff, do you happen to have that? If not, I think I have it back here.
Yeah, I don't think I have.
Complete. It's email. This is.
Okay. I don't know, it's both. That's 227.
I apologize. It happened.
Doesn't really matter, but I'm just curious.
Because, you know, what is our portion of this?
Okay. It's 20 percent. Your portion is 20 percent.
It's 20 percent. So again, this is even if it's.
Less than what we had budgeted.
Right. It was less than what we had budgeted.
If anybody has a calculator, I have the two numbers, but I don't have them added together.
I can do that.
Are you ready?
Yep.
$337,863. And that was D Street. And Kirkwood was $165,084. I think it comes to.
502,947?
That sounds right.
Okay.
You came in at 386, so.
Right. And our portion is 20 percent. So it's a marginal savings for us, but it's, it is, it is below what we had projected, so. Now, Jerry, the, you know, we have a public hearing scheduled for the Kirkwood portion. Obviously, this is.
For the DOT purposes.
We need to approve that separately.
As one project.
Okay. So at this point, this, this motion then is to approve the D Street portion. We'll open a public hearing, do the same thing. The report will be the same because the, they are combined.
They are combined.
So that we have those two separate action items. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Abstain.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. We're going to need, we're going to need, pardon me?
Oh, I was just going to say, we expect that project to start around June 11th.
Oh, terrific. Great. Very good. Next, council, we have another public hearing regarding the paving project on 227th Street West. And Jeff, what can you describe to us the step that we're taking this evening? We have been through several approval processes on this project already.
Well, there's actually two steps tonight. I'm not sure the order matters, but there was some confusion on the date and the advertisement was done with the public hearing scheduled for the 9th. And we didn't do it on the 9th, so we have to ratify the public hearing per the language of the legal counsel in order to then go ahead and address the public hearing and do the final approval tonight. So we'll be approving the public hearing through the ratification process first and then, assuming that you're in agreement, approving the award of the contract, second.
Okay, we're getting nods out there, so I think.
Did I say that good?
Your bonding attorney earned their money on this situation.
Or created the need for paying.
Right. So this first, okay, so this first action that we're going to be taking, is there any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing. So this first action we'll be taking, I'm not sure I understand, ratifying a public hearing. Is that just simply what it is that we're?
That's the legal language they told us to use.
A certification of a public hearing. We've held it, it's been, okay. So I'd make a motion, or entertain a motion to ratify the public hearing on 227th Street construction.
I move to ratify the public hearing.
Moved by Hallie.
All right, second ratification.
Second rat. Second by Hammers. Any other discussion? No more questions? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Abstain.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Okay. So our second action then will be to give final approval to the, award the bid.
Yes, correct.
And that is also a public hearing, so we'll declare that open. Melanie?
The bids were opened last Thursday by the supervisors. This is Grimes and 227th, that's combined with the county. There were two divisions to the work, that way, we can separate the two assessments. The low bid for 227th was from, by J&amp;L Construction out of Washington for $139,113.38. That was for division, for the 227th division, giving them a total bid of $301,396.68. The other two bids were Wesley Barton Construction out of Mount Pleasant and Shipley Contracting out of Burlington.
Can you mention those amounts as well, please?
The total for Barton Construction was $330,590.56. Shipley was $342,573.05.
Okay. So we will be approving the total amount? Should our motion read the total amount of the project is what we're agreeing to?
Yes.
Okay. And again, J&amp;L Construction, that was $301,396.68.
Correct.
But we're only paying for the?
Yes, but I think, also, I was just asking, we are approving our portion of the, of the entire amount.
You're approving the contract with J&amp;L, which is for both divisions.
Right.
Even though you only have a portion of it.
Okay.
They will produce bonds, bond for just your portion of 227th and a separate bond for the county's portion.
Right. I just want to make sure whatever, whatever motion we have of record has the right amount in it. So we are, the amount should be, the total amount, the language can state that it'll be our portion of.
That's a good question. I'd go for the larger amount, because then you're covered.
Yeah.
We can do the larger amount and then put in the city's share in the motion or in the action.
Right.
So that it's clear what our expectation is of paying and what the total contract is.
Because we do have that. Yeah. Okay. So then the motion then would be to approve the $301,396.68, of which, $139,113.38 is the city portion.
Well, that's the 227th portion, and then if you break it down again, your portion is 50 percent of that.
It's really not even that, because it's TIF. So I think it's our responsibility to see that the other portion is paid.
Okay.
The 139. So I think it'd be too complicated otherwise.
To break it down.
So then the, all right, then the motion will be for the full amount. So entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Abstain.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you, Melanie. Next, council, we will take that item that Jeff had mentioned, setting a date for a public hearing, which would be May 14th, our next meeting, for the Second Street Water Main Project between Madison and Jackson.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we have a resolution to approve, which would be the, taking the next step with our consultants regarding the aquatic center and recreation facility with Burbach Aquatics. Derek Wolfcoles here. Derek, do you have anything that you want to add to what we've been presented with? It's just a matter of, we have to make this approval and take it to the next step. Cost of the service will not exceed $2,500. We do have that budgeted for this year's work. So I'd entertain a motion then to approve the Phase One, Step Two of the professional services agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you, Melanie. Next, council, we will take that item that Jeff had mentioned, setting a date for a public hearing, which would be May 14th, our next meeting, for the Second Street Water Main Project between Madison and Jackson.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we have a resolution to approve, which would be the, taking the next step with our consultants regarding the aquatic center and recreation facility with Burbach Aquatics. Derek Wolfcoles here. Derek, do you have anything that you want to add to what we've been presented with? It's just a matter of, we have to make this approval and take it to the next step. Cost of the service will not exceed $2,500. We do have that budgeted for this year's work. So I'd entertain a motion then to approve the Phase One, Step Two of the professional services agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have the third and final reading for our ordinance amending water rates. This is a public hearing, so we'll declare that open at this time and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the rate increases. Not seeing any comments, that will close the public hearing. And there, any feedback that the council received or what is your wish to move this to the third and final?
Move to approve through the final.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, we have the third and final reading for our wastewater sewer rate amended ordinance, which would be a raise of about 3 percent. This is public hearing. We'll declare that open at this time. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask the council to move to the final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rivalinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council, we have the second reading of an ordinance that would establish vendor permit license and regulations for special events. That was presented for the first reading at our last meeting. I'll open the public hearing on this ordinance and ask if there's any feedback. Donnie, I see you're here from First Friday's Art Walk. I know that you weren't able to be at our last meeting. If there's anything you'd like to mention to the council about, there were some questions that came up about management of this, and if there's anything you'd like to add, you can do that now. If not, proceed.
Sure. If there's any questions, I can be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So Donnie can be available for any questions that came up last time, if.
Two things I should point out. One, there was a request to make a revision to the ordinance to add the, excluding the local farmer's market and the citywide garage sales, which I think you can see has been done. And then Donnie and I met and we talked about eliminating the fee for the sidewalk musicians. And so there's also been a change to where they would be required to get a no-fee license. I believe that's the only changes we made.
Yes, it's more of a matter of having the musicians check in with Art Walk versus setting up wherever they want, because we're all, we will also be having some strolling musicians and it would be awkward to have Reese standing up in the same corner trying to play. So it's more a matter of just knowing where people are and being able to organize the talent that we would have for Art Walk.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's the time to make a friendly amendment.
It is.
I was thinking, I didn't know if you'd need to close the public hearing. I've had two calls regarding the city band concerts, and so I was thinking we should also include them in the exclusions, just so it's really clear for the public. And then I had one other question, and that is regarding number two under regulations, where we say the vendor fee for a weekend license is $40. And I see that we might want to do a little modification there, because we don't talk about if we, if we get a event that's during the week. And also, I see an issue with, you know, particularly with the June Art Walk, and then the next day is All Things Italian. So if we say a weekend, they're getting a, you know, a license for both those, both So if we say a weekend, they're getting a, you know, license for both those, both those days, however, you know, is there going to be an issue between the two groups of who's getting that vendor fee?
Could it be written, I mean, Art Walk, we're only interested in our event, but what if it was set up, you have sponsor in the language, what if you have it set up per weekend per sponsor? Since All Things Italian is not, you know, an Art Walk event, it's not affiliated with Art Walk.
Just $40 per event.
And I would see, I would see that language working well for the concerts, so you don't have to specifically say the city concerts, because to me, that is the event. It's not they're having to pay to use the square for that. And also, there could be an occasion where All Things Italian doesn't happen the Saturday after...
It's not. It's actually, it's actually decoupled, so it is, it will be on a different day.
Right, right. So they could be a different day during the month.
But you could have, you could have a Friday and Saturday event. You could have a line on the square calling on Art Walk.
We, and we actually, it's possible that Art Walk could have an event that is longer than just Friday, so...
Right.
That, it would be great to have that taken in consideration with the ordinance.
I guess the thing, the way it reads right now is a weekend license, so if somebody gets one for Friday night for Art Walk, they're thinking they have it for Friday and Saturday, one Saturday, yeah, on Sunday, when in fact...
If they're three different events.
Yeah, when in fact, Art Walk may not be happening on Saturday, so...
Sure, you could do it, I mean, what do you think, Jeff, having it for a weekend license?
I think what Michael said, if we just add per event, that pretty much takes care of it and leave the rest of it there. Weekend fee will, it will be $40 per event. So if there's two separate events, it's two separate fees.
And the vendor fee is $40 per event.
If it's the same event, it's all weekend, then it would be one fee.
And then, if, if it's during the week, we're saying weekend or event, that'll be all right?
No, we won't say weekend.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. There was one comment that was brought to me as well. Do the event sponsors have the ability to refuse a vendor license? If it doesn't coincide with their particular type of event, can they refuse to issue?
How do you handle that with Art Walk?
Well, I, I would say we would like to have the right to refuse in the sense that we would like to have artisans and craft people at Art Walk versus somebody that's selling Tupperware. So I, I think there should be, I think that the sponsor should have the ability to discriminate who is going to apply for a license. You would have that for any, any art show. I mean, in, in our situation, that a lot of art shows are either juried, or there are some requirements regarding having, getting a license, so yes.
I, yeah, I would probably, I would probably put that on the responsibility of the organization to clearly write up what it is, that they define what their expectations are so that someone coming in understands.
So each organization would then have to have their own set of rules that they hand out with all the rest of this paperwork, so that it can state that they don't approve this particular type of vendor in the event that's going on.
It's a good question. I'm looking at, I'm looking out at John Morrissey and I'm wondering if, if, if through our, through that exclusion, we run into any problems.
Well, I think Donnie has kind of hit it on the head. Let's say you're having an art, art show in the street or whatever, that's, that's a very good example of where your, your rules would be already pretty understood. But for some of the things we have in the square, it is, it is going to be difficult because some of your vendors, the Tupperware vendor included, our ordinance draft is just talking about the person selling their product without defining the product or in any way limiting it. So maybe you do want to add something in here that it is subject to the organization being sponsored limitations as well as our ordinance restrictions. And then you, at that point, make sure that you have those available before anybody ever applies the license, so that our restrictions aren't declared to be vague. That's what will defeat the ordinance is vagueness. So you want to have it in the folder when the person walks in to get their permit.
I think it's a good suggestion. I think it would be, be important that we spell that out ahead of time.
We are in the process of creating an online registration form that lists the, the requirements for the city, and we can certainly add a description as to what type of vendors that we're looking for. And we can add that on our website and make it a simple process for registering online. And then we can have...
Yeah, I think that's fine, but I think for the purpose, yeah, there are other organizations.
There's other organizations that need to have this knowledge.
But I think we need to have the, we need to have at least the general language that John just referred to, that it would be...
Yeah, there needs to be like an item nine listed in the...
Or maybe under regulations, we would say, item five.
Item five under regulations. That's probably a better location.
Say something like, the licenses may be, will be issued at the discretion of the, the event organizations' discretion or some, or published guidelines? Subject to their published guidelines, I think. It's important that that be put in writing in advance.
Yeah. Okay, so we have two amendments that have been suggested. One is to the language change that Connie had recommended, that so that we take out weekend and we say per event, and then also that language that describes the vendor policies that are disclosed and are subject to approval.
And so you don't think we need to exclude the band concerts to put that in writing either?
I would think they are the sponsoring event.
They would be a sponsoring event, Connie. That's, I was gonna mention that. In other words, they're not subject to this, but if, if there were vendors who wanted to set up for the band concert, then the band concert would be the approving organization.
Okay.
So the, so the band, the band concerts are not excluded in any way.
Okay, gotcha.
Or coming under any, any other guidance of this. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing with those two amendments and entertain a motion to approve from the second to the third reading.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Boyer. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our city administrator report, Jeff, you did have something you wanted to call to the council's attention.
I did. Excuse me, one of the things I've talked to some of the group about, some of the council about, through the exit process of me leaving, was that I would put a, I'm gonna call it a memo together of some points that I felt might be valuable for you to know, or department heads or both, in terms of some ongoing projects or activities. So I've done that. It's a five or six-page memo, and I've provided each of the council with a copy of that for your review. I won't obviously go through that point by point right now, but it has basic information like passwords and phone numbers and accesses, and then the status of certain projects, projects that we have ongoing, and then where some of that information could be found, like in my office or in this building, in case somebody needs to find something to keep something moving forward. So I think I've tried to address everything I could think of that, that is in the loop right now. If not, you know, everybody has my phone, excuse me, my phone number on a phone call away, but I would briefly like to say thanks for two years of lots of memories, and it's been a great and enjoyable experience, one of the best of my career, and I appreciate everybody and everything they've done to make it that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. So moving on to my report, I would just want to continue that theme as well and, and just say that, you know, Jeff, you've really, you know, during, during our interview process, and we're preparing for another set of interviews coming up at the end of this week, you know, we were going into this, going, going into that hiring at that time, hoping that we would find someone with, you know, real good leadership skills and someone who would blend well with our community and be able to bring in a set of experiences that could really, you know, move our city forward. And I would say that you far surpassed what we, what we expected of that, and then certainly, you know, getting to know you, I think everyone here would say it's just been a, it's just been a delight and a pleasure to work with you in every way, whether it's here while we govern on the council meetings, but on a day-to-day basis, you've been so available and so accessible. And even the organization of this process that we're going through for our hiring, something that gives us great confidence, that we know that your replacement, that we are sorry that we have to go through this process, but we'd love to keep you, is going to be very good, because it's had also your stamp on it as well. So thank you very much, and invite any, any thanks from the council as well.
Well, one thing that really impressed me about Jeff is openness to continue learning. And I think a lot of people who have as much experience as you could get cocky and maybe arrogant, but you always maintain humility, and if you didn't know something, you didn't pretend to know it, and you went and you learned it. So I'm really gonna miss you, and it's been great working with you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Just to echo that, Jeff, and I think you have a lot of admirers here, and we wish all the best in your new position, but please know you have a lot of friends here in Fairfield.
Thanks.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks. Well, thanks, everyone. I just, I also wanted to mention that it was a small part of something very extraordinary yesterday, that I hope everyone in the council will take the time over the next week, if you haven't yet, to go down and see what took place in the planting of this orchard just outside of Chautauqua Park. So you go to the, to the very bottom of the park and cross the bridge, heading east towards the loop trail, and then turn north, walk about 50 yards, and there were 200 trees planted yesterday as community orchard. And the volunteerism was extraordinary. They had scheduled three shifts, and the nine o'clock shift had 50 volunteers, and by 10:30, they had to slow everybody down and say, wait, we're not gonna have enough trees here for others to plant. There are two more coming. There were 70 volunteers in the second shift and 100 in the third shift, and many people came to the, to the barbecue and presentations later on, but it was a, it's quite an extraordinary day. When we talk about the, this urban orchard that will be here for, you know, many, many, many years to come, part of our original city park, it was just a really tremendous day, a joyous day. And all of our partners from Alliant and Trees Forever were so impressed, and they really so happy that they chose Fairfield for this hometown rewards program, that it was a very, very proud day yesterday. So in probably four or five years, we'll be eating a lot of fruit, and we'll be drafting an ordinance about how much someone can actually take out of the orchard. Those kinds of things will be dealt with. I've already had those questions. So a, a great, great day for us. Next, council, we will be moving into closed session. We are beginning our, our interview process for the position of city administrator, so we will, we will be taking one of those tonight, so I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you.